All right, so let's do a call to order roll call and get our workshop going here.
Yes, roll call. Deb Cassini Klein. Matt Castillo.
Here.
Rook Breschet Williams.
Will not be here today.
Thank you, Mr. President. Adam McDowell.
Here.
Valerie Rent Taylor.
Here.
Diane Law.
Here.
Mayor Paul Gamrat.
Here.
And of course, President Jay Dorn.
I'm still here. Thank you. Let's jump right into to public comment and then we'll get it to the workshop of the day. Raise your hands. You will have three minutes. Watch over and get this going. First up, looks like it's Kathy Boardner. Kathy, if you want to state your name, which Eric stated, we all know it, but she addressed, we could move forward. That would be great. Go to Kathy. So as soon as you unmute yourself, the floor will be yours.
Okay, can you hear me?
I can. We can hear you fine.
Okay, great. I'm going to keep this very short. There's been a lot of tree removal in the last, I don't know, weeks or months, whatever. And I've heard a lot of people have been very concerned about this. And I've heard that there's different reasons. Duquesne Light is taking down a lot of trees. The Hillwood is doing, taking boring samples. I think I've also heard that there's diseased trees that have to be taken down. Maybe there's a boring insect. I don't know. But considering that we do have a tree ordinance in the borough and we do have a tree committee, all of this seems to indicate to me that the people of Churchill are very interested in the trees. And although in many instances, these are on private property and people have the right to to cut down trees on their private property, I would like to ask that the council consider doing a report on what has been going on with tree removal in the borough and especially on the former George Westinghouse R and D site. Again, I know it's private property and they have the right to do what they want to on their property. But there were over almost 60 hours of testimony during the public hearings on the conditional use permit. And during many of those, the testimony people brought up concern about 1,400 trees being removed from the site. I think the least that the Hillwood would consider doing is just to keep us appraised of what is going on in terms of the trees. How many trees have been removed from the site and and why is that happening? And if it's just because they want to, then just tell us that. It is really time for Hillwood to be transparent with the residents of this borough. Even though they've gotten their permit approved, they should, they claim that they all do wonderful things for the borough and they can start by communicating with us, being transparent. And I encourage them to start that conversation with the topic of the trees. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment. We appreciate it. I would just say that we have the tree committee and any report about trees. I would assume we go through the tree committee when it comes to our climate action committee. So that would be something that we would look back to the tree committee to provide any information on. As far as private property, I think you're 100% right. It is private property. It's a little more tricky there. Was there anybody else who wanted to have a public comment? Mary, you are promoted. The floor is yours if you would like to mute yourself.
Am I being promoted?
You are promoted. We can hear you fine.
All right, thank you. For some reason, I'm having problems with my video here again tonight. But anyway, two things. First, I want.
I'm sorry to interrupt.
Oh, yes. Murray Billby, 2424 Churchill Road.
Awesome. Thank you.
Okay. One is I appreciate having the agenda prior to the meeting. It allows me to follow a little more closely what's taking place. And I want to commend, I assume, Alex who did that, but it certainly helps me as a resident to follow the activities that are taking place. And just as a side, I'm a little concerned about those trees as well. Because from my perspective, that whole section beside the white building was simply clear cut all the way down to where the future wall will start. I know a little bit about drilling. From my perspective, it was rationalization for something that was planned to do. So I would like to second Kathy's request that perhaps we have a little better understanding of what's taking place. Because if there's no trees left and they've removed them all, then the whole argument that we had before is mute. I mean, I planted over 60 trees on my, on my property, 60. But that's nothing. And they're still really small compared to what was removed. So there's no even transfer enough. So those are my comments this evening, and I thank you very much for posting those, the agenda.
Thank you, Mary. We appreciate your comments. Was there anybody else who was interested in commenting? I don't see any other hands raised. I also know that there's a phone line. So any of those, I think we can, we can sort through that briefly, give them a second to see if they want to comment. Phone line, I think it's been promoted. So if you are, this is the 3270647. If you have a comment, please unmute yourself now and we will allow you to comment as well. I'll try to get a couple of seconds. Okay. Hearing no other comments, then we're going to close public comment and move into discussion. As I kind of said to everybody before, you know, the online space has definitely changed the way that our, that our workshop is. I am not a fan of feeling like we're not working in workshop, but we're presenting in workshop. And so I really intend on allowing, you know, obviously, just like any other workshop, the public are encouraged to listen, given the opportunity to have comment. But once we've moved past public comment, I really want to be able to engage in everyone. And that may mean that, that to the public, you may now just get a clear shot of my face, if you'd like, maybe looking at other people. I expect them to do the same with me. So, 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 so you know, right now, we're still sitting this way. I don't anticipate that being the case moving forward for people who are viewing online. Because it really has been disruptive to getting work done. And I think we want you to be able to hear us. We want you to be able to know what's going on. But we need to be able to get to get work done. And this is not a conducive environment set around as if it's the business. Having said that, we've got a regular kind of items on the space. So first of all, just in the sense of draft minutes, reports, any questions, comments, concerns, anything? I'm assuming there isn't, isn't much, but you know, if people have anything, what's up, sir? Yeah, it's all you.
Nothing to report. I just got the mayor's report today. I'll, you know, have that ready by next.
Yeah, I assume, you know, and that's, you know, that's fine. It gives us a chance. We get it before, we get a chance to read it before we actually hit into the, in the meeting. So that's it. Anything, Alex, and you're right. I'm doing the best I can, but like I said, we'll work on increasing the volume, but we need to be able to get the work done too. No, it's all you know. Yeah, it is what it is. I think it's all very real. But the thing that I, you know, and this is kind of, I don't want to spend our workshop time addressing the public after public comment because it's actually time to get work done in workshop. And so what I'm trying to convey to folks is that for us to do the work that we need to do coming out of this crazy COVID space, we need to be able to actually work and face each other and talk to each other and not just be a presenter to the public. The public can hear us. They should be able to hear us. So if you're having problems hearing us, we're going to work on miking and other stuff. But in terms of like this being the forward facing and presenting to the public, that's not what we did in workshop, quite frankly, in the past, even when we had people in person. And that's not what I anticipate us doing going forward. But I'll try and speak up here. I'll move this here, maybe. There we go. Hopefully that's helpful for folks. Okay, so what we got up our sleeve here, Alex? Not hearing anything on mayor, any of the treasure space, if we need any good questions, if we're concerned about Adam, anything rolling your way? I got your, your, your email on it outside of the tax collector.
Yeah, and Alex, what it's worth, I can't really hear, hear you if Alex is saying anything. But yeah, just want to be sure we're getting that tax collector report every month. And I think we have, we'll have that discussion about the police car here. And as I see, it's on the agenda, it's number five.
How's, how's? Have you, did you send that out there in terms of making sure we're getting regular reports?
Be related to the tax collector?
Yeah, you have had a conversation.
Yeah, she'll be making reports according to the DCD format as required. Yeah. She just, the new account that you authorized last month has been opened and I think today may have received its first deposits.
Okay. Thanks, Adam. Anything else coming out of the manager's space that we need to discuss upfront that's not already on the agenda? All right. Volunteer fire, anything? I could run through all these, just a couple of them that I want to make sure.
We just had heavy winds come through today and, and I got a couple of messages from council members asking why so many alarms were going off. And I actually saw our fire engines go by our building a couple of times, going from one end of the community to the other end. Hopefully people's property didn't incur too much damage today.
So speaking of heavy winds, here's my question of the day, particularly for the, you know, the tree questions and the tree committee, right? So I guess I post this to Adam to post back to a tree committee at some point, right? So you've got a generally okay tree, right? But it's got huge branches that are following them. Like, you know, people are getting killed. They kind of branches, right? As we go, it's a serious injury. Right? So if you can't afford to do the kind of trimming on the tree like that, right? Because it costs more sometimes to trim for the same, just clear it, except you got to do it annually. What's the option? I mean, in these, it's a great thought about how much we love the trees, how important they are, and I agree with that. But I'm also trying to be a realist about our citizens and the finances and the needs and their abilities to do this. I think sometimes we have folks who have the ability. Right? And they speak about it in terms, or in that framework. And they forget about that we have residents that can't afford to regularly trim the trees. And they have, I mean, I've got two 80-foot oaks that I just had a, a 100-pound branch come down, smacking a little of my lawn, you know, which would have killed somebody. You know? You know, I take them all the time. I throw them over by hillside, chop some of the firewood and have somebody come through and can trim. But there's a real thing that we need to talk, we need to talk about in terms of our residents where we're not vilifying the folks who are trying to address this and that's where they go. So I pose that back to my tree committee friends and hope they can, they can come up with something too.
Yeah, I think, Jay, that's been an issue that we have been dealing with since the tree ordinance came out several years ago. So I'll take that and take it back to the climate action committee and we'll meet with the tree committee, set something up where we can discuss with them. That among several other issues that we have to discuss with them at this point.
There's a lot in that space and I appreciate their work and your work with them. So don't take it, don't take anything but that, that's for sure. That is for sure. Anything else in this space that anybody wants to discuss? We can move on to any committee reports or whatnot. All right, let's jump into the committees and kind of segue that way anyway. So where do you want to start? Do you want to give updates that are better, folks?
I'll just jump in for infrastructure. We'll have our formal report in the binder for next week, but our meeting is Wednesday morning at 9:00 AM. We did have a separate breakout meeting on our ordinance update for, of course, it's going to escape me right now. Occupancy permit inspections. So we are moving that forward and that was a good working meeting.
Who else want to update?
I can provide a little bit further update from the climate action committee. In addition to the discussions we'll, we'll have about trees coming up. So we also met with Eric Robb of the University of Pittsburgh Graduate School of Public and International Affairs Connect Program to discuss joining with a local climate action plan. These are plans that they're already in the works with a lot of local communities around here. And so we're teaming up with other burrows around us so that we're not sort of off on our own doing this. But we're working the same as, you know, Forest Hills and other local communities. And we have a sort of consistent plan across the area. So we met with him a couple of times. And also, we discussed with him the new, very newly formed Allegheny County Solar Co-op and how we can get some information to our residents if they want to do things like put solar panels on our, on their roofs, how we can work with sort of the infrastructure that's already in place for these ongoing climate plans. And, you know, just sort of piggyback on those and move Churchill along those lines with Connect.
On the 10th, we're having our first really formal public safety committee meeting. And there are a number of items on that agenda. I can't promise that we're going to have a report for next Monday because there may be things that go on that don't allow for that, but we will have a report for April.
Also, so folks know, and again, some of these things that
Jay, I'm sorry. Can you get closer to the mic? You're, you're, you sound a little far away. Thank you.
This is as close as I can get. I'm about to eat the mic.
That is perfect.
I've got, I've got green light going. I'm, I'm engulfed, you know, I'm eating the mic at this point. So I'm doing all I can for you, I promise.
Thank you. That sounds much better.
No, no worries. But so we met the consortium for the kind of, I'll put it in government relations. I'll just take them under government relations. So the, the kind of Woodland Hills Consortium of all the municipalities met to discuss the current status of the school district. There, at that meeting was Mike Belmont and I can't remember what was the, the other school board member. Scott, thank you. And so there was discussion that I'll put into to report. But it focused on a few, a few kind of key issues, one being the space of security. Apparently, no one was aware that they have contracted with constables, armed constables in the school. For those of you who don't know, you know the story, kind of what's going on there, the chief and all that. But, you know, what we understand is that the other municipalities weren't aware of that either. And so we had a pretty long conversation on communication and what this means, of why they would do such, you know, these kind of things and not let people know.
They not, like, how did that happen? That's
Well, that's a funny, kind of crazy. Funny question that you're posing. How does it happen that a school board who has a general sense of autonomy under, under kind of, as an educational facility, as a school board, not communicate with the jurisdictions in which they operate? You know, there's two, I think, train of thought there, right? And we, I've said these upfront, so I don't mind saying them in our own, right? Either, and we talked about competence, right? So either it's a question of competence that people didn't realize that they shouldn't be telling municipalities what they're doing inside of the jurisdictions. The second, if it's not competence, you know, is one in which they're not being forthright. Right? That we've had a relationship with them centered around the SRO. They withdrew the SRO. There was a lot of talk back and forth about the roles of SROs in schools and positive ways that they can be there. They made that decision to withdraw the SRO. They didn't have any follow-up conversations with us. They moved forward. We, we had a conversation with them a few months ago after the October fight, remember the big fight in October at the high school? Because they didn't have a conversation with us then. And we said, you know, communication is really important. They said, yes, it is. We told them, get it, you know, we'll make sure that their head of security speaks with our police chief regularly. And here we are. So as I told them in my conversation, you know, I'm an Occam's razor kind of guy, right? I believe that, you know, the most likely is the most logical, right? What's more likely, right? After you talk to somebody about conversations that they still don't tell you things, that they're doing that because they don't remember or because they don't want to? So, you know, it's a relationship that we're waiting to see what their response is, but that was kind of where we left off in that space. We'll put that in the reported space.
Do we know, did they vote on that during a public meeting?
So interestingly enough, I said to them, I said, you know, you have a contract. So obviously it's a contract. There had to be discussion. So the thing is, to be quite frank, I can't sit through all of their meetings and my meetings, right? To make sure I'm catching every single thing. So we used to get updates from, from Jamie from the previous board president, here's what we're doing. They're doing a little bit of internal finger pointing and what comes along with it. But either way, you know, they, they acknowledge that they couldn't have moved forward without passing for a contract that they have to pass it. So there has to be discussion of both. So.
It may make sense internally for us to discuss, at least for the next couple of months, you know, having a volunteer, you know, one here and there, somebody sit in on their meetings. And not that we all have the time for it, but to at least sit in on a couple of them. So.
I agree. I would, and I would do that. Yeah.
Sure. You're volunteering for that?
No, I am.
That's, that's a lot. So I'm going to make you all of them.
I can, I can help. But no, I'd like to. At least, at least until we get things smoothed out and we're getting better communication.
Right.
Yeah, it's on the website. You can go to the Woodland Hills School District website, go to the board, go down and it'll say video archive. So you can watch the whole meeting from your sofa.
What I, what I want to say to that is, so there's two, there's two frameworks. There is, watch the meeting afterwards, Diane and I have done many, 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 many times now. It's a, it's a slot, right? And then there's active live at the meeting. Generally, in the past, and this is something we need to think about in terms of how we interact with the school board. In the past, it's been our position that we don't go to their meetings and comment to them unless it's something just egregious that needs to be, you know, has to be said in that form. We would, you know, we expect the same kind of respect in, in, in reverse. So, you know, watching it, you can watch it at any time. So you don't necessarily have to watch it live, I think, but it would be something. And it's something we can put to committee in that sense so that we have some oversight review of it. So.
I would just add that along those lines, it's very easy for you to be misunderstood, misinterpreted. When you're saying something in public and there's an inner change, inner exchange back and forth, you can get yourself into a bad place real quickly. So that's another reason why we just decided that's not a good practice.
But if you all want to help on the, on the watching.
On the watching.
The watching of the, of the school board, because it's a thing. I am super appreciative and we can, we can.
How often are their meetings?
Twice monthly. It's legislative.
Legislative in a, in a
Some, some of us in that sense.
Workshop kind of thing, yeah.
Right. Other thing I just wanted to say with regard to relations. So if you're not aware, we were in the 18th, which is then the 12th district for
Yes.
federal, for our federal representative.
Yes.
Right? As you know, the Supreme, the State Supreme Court, and now the Federal Supreme Court, just before we came here, has upheld it, has changed our district. So we are no longer in the 18th, which was then the 12th. We're now in the 17th, right? And so there's, if you've been kind of involved in what's happening irrespective of party, this is not a party issue. This is, this is a districting issue. If you spent time talking to a candidate or working with somebody and they were in the 17th district, hence the 12th district, that is no longer the people that you will be voting for. You will now be voting for people in the 12th, in the, in the 17th district. We've had a couple reach out so far. And we had the opportunity to have a conversation with one of the candidates so far. And obviously, all the same major issues, you know, and get them up to speed and so forth. But yeah, just a, just a quick note to folks that we've changed districts officially. There's no more appeal space. This is, this is the deal. Correct. That's at the federal level for a congressperson. No. No, with that. But yeah, but right, as of right now, yeah, as, as right now, the Carter plan, the draft maps that they've been using tend to leave us in the same space for our, for our state representation. Yeah, well, we, we, we changed before.
Yep.
Right? We, you know, Churchill is a, is a space that, that has been redistricted more, more than once now. Because our, you know, quite frankly, on the political side of this, right, the, you know, the basic represent, the basic framework of who we were as a party, like overall shifted. And so the people in Washington said, oh, well, it's better to gerrymander it this way than that way, right? And now they're doing the same thing again, right? You know, whether it's for fairness or not for fairness is a whole other question. You know, the Supreme Court has made their decision on that, that the federal Supreme Court, along with the state Supreme Court. But for us, it means they just moved the line slightly, pulled us like Penn Hills, Wilkinsburg. Yeah. And then went north and around. Yeah. So that's our, that's our new, our new home. So we have a new home now. So welcome to the 17th. Then it rips all the way across the other side. So, you know. So if you get a chance, look at the maps. We're looking at, that's all the reporting that will come out of government relations. Other things folks have to, to report on in that space? Committee stuff that we can anticipate, anybody want to discuss now? All right. So I'm going to move my way to a highbred interceptor. Talk to me. What's, uh? Where are we at here? With our, with our purchase of a, of a new police interceptor? I think we're on, we're on five now. So. So do you guys see the the report, the mayor's report with the, that's our regular kind of outline. You know, I'm, I'm interested to hear if there's anything from anybody who has issue with it, concerns, comments, kind of where we are.
So I, oh. I was just going to say from, the finance committee did briefly discuss this at our last meeting. There were certain concerns that our existing police car has to have some extensive repairs anyway. And this was put into capital improvements plan last year. So I'll let Alex go into a little bit more detail because he knows all the details of that. But we did discuss this in finance, but from our understanding, I believe this is still a pending issue to be discussed here tonight.
Yeah, at the risk of getting the numbers messed up, we were planning on replacing, I think, a 2012 SUV, which was number seven. But meanwhile, number, number four, which is the sedan, it's 2011, broke down and estimated repair was over 4,000. I apologize for that handwritten note being the repair estimate, but it's just an estimate. And the chief and Ralph and I agree, just no confidence wanting to put into a 2011 vehicle about $4,000 without any sort of, six months from now, it could be in the same boat. What the chief has articulated in his letter is we've had a pattern of fleet management whereby we replace a vehicle on a regular basis so that, you know, the miles are kept within reason and they're able to do what they need to do when they do it. So what will happen is unfortunately, instead of replacing one, we were planning on replacing when entering the year, we thought we'd get another year out of the sedan. We'll be replacing the sedan. We won't put the repair money into that. It's right now off the road. It's not drivable. So we'd like to be able to order, just move forward. We, our dealers are telling us, even though we hear a lot about chip and part supplies issues related to vehicles that we should be able to get in a timely fashion. But, but unlike you and myself, you just can't go to the dealership and get one of these. They got to be outfitted. Get it in timely fashion, but, but unlike you and myself, you just can't go to the dealership and get one of these. They gotta be outfitted, striped, computerized. So even if we ordered it tomorrow, um, i- it could be, you know, I'm not sure if it'd be May. Would be realistic for us to be able to actually have it on the road.
I, I was just gonna add, Paul, I think um, last week or last month in our meeting, there was some confusion when we talked about adding a vehicle, not necessarily replacing it. So it's, you know, in line with our capital plan, it's been budgeted, let's do it.
Right, and I apologize for that. I was, you know, on my part to say that we're buying a new vehicle, what I should have said.
My, my, my misunderstanding, completely my fault, so.
Well, I'll just take the tip for that. How's that? So that way you're both clear. Yeah, so, so let's buy a new police vehicle.
Thank you.
Well, you know, I think there's a process issue too, you know, that what, what does it mean to have something budgeted? You know, and who makes the decision when to follow through with something that was budgeted? Is that supposed to come to the council for a vote when that, when the car is ordered? Or is that something that should be taken care of based on what the finance committee?
Historically, my understanding is that the, the chief and Ralph may not even been involved in that. It was just, it was budgeted. And then it was ordered after the new year within a reasonable timeframe.
Okay.
So yeah, the procedurally. Budgeted first, most of the conversation is what I was trying to express last time. We're just on that, on that track of just, you know, following on our source. Um, but historically, what, what we've done is during the, the budgeting process. We kind of have the conversation of what, what our capital outlets look like, what their reasonable space is gonna be. And then when it comes actually time for the purchase. We normally have another conversation amongst council that says, hey, remember that? It's time, right? So that when we see the bill later and people are signing off and reviewing the bills, no one's like, wait a second, what was that? Um, pretty simple, pretty easy, as long, because the, the big piece is the discussion. Uh, generally during the, during the budgeting process where everyone's back and forth now. Um, I say historically because, you know, each, each council's gonna have a different space, each council member's gonna have a different space. And there were council members I could count on to say, no matter what the, the situation was, right? Like when I was the council president, um, you know, we can't buy another police car and the, we're falling off three police cars at the same time. And there were council members who were like, we should buy the luxury, can we get like a Cadillac and a police car, you know? Uh, so fortunately, there, there's a, there's a middle ground. Uh, s- speaking of, of the, the people who say things on, on the police car end, I'm still looking for when we can get fully electric.
Oh, yeah.
Right? I've been pushing, the thing is, they don't really exist yet in a way that's usable for us, so. Uh, because if we could, I'd be pushing for it right now. Um, but as you know, as, as Alex has said before, we've all, it's not like you just get a car and then, you know, throw a light on top of it, right? So it's gotta be able to kind of deal and handle uh, police life. Uh, that's something that I think as we move forward and we think about it, and we know that long term projecting. Everything's gonna have to be electric by a lot of, a lot of our major police vehicle manufacturers, particularly coming out of Detroit. Won't put much Detroit hometown skill right now.
And, and if I could comment on that, in general, municipalities fall into a couple camps, particularly. Um, if they have a take home policy, the vehicle, if you can imagine, only works the shift that the individual works. That space would make a lot of sense for electric vehicles. But when you have the policy we have, which is they stay on shift, the car could literally be moving twenty hours a day.
Right.
It's kind of hard to recharge your car when it's in operation kind of consistently. So we're doing the hybrid. Um, option that going forward, we have to think about fleet management entirely. So if you move to electric, I'd imagine you almost have to increase the quantity of your vehicles. Now, the good news is you hold them longer. They don't like, you know, lose sight of it. If you have a car that's only working one shift. Instead of three shifts a week, it can stay longer in your possession. And, and therefore you're not replacing maybe cars as frequently. It kind of comes out in the wash. But having said that, that's kind of a nuance where we're not at yet.
Yeah, and in the challenge of future casting on, on electric vehicles, really is you're not just. Talking about kind of where we are, you're anticipating what battery life is gonna look like, you're anticipating what charge time is gonna look like. So for instance, you know, if you would have asked me five or six years ago, right? What does charging look like for, for a vehicle, right? The highest charge you could find was about two hundred and fifty miles, right? And it took you quite a long time to get your, your vehicle charged up. If you ask me today, what is charging life look like? Now you're about three hundred and fifty miles and you can get eighty percent of that in about half hour, right? If you got a high speed charger now. Um, now that requires, you know, and I'm not talking about your home high speed charger, right? When I say that. So that now requires like, you know, the electrification of the garage, right? And bringing it in. So all of that comes into play when we start thinking about kind of the future of what this looks like. I'm good with a hybrid right now. Let me see. So uh, but I think as we think long term fleet management. That that's gotta become part of our conversation. That's all I'm saying, so.
Well, of course, I have to say that um, this is also a matter of public policy. From a state and federal standpoint, some municipalities should be able to expect and work for incentives. To change their fleets, grant kinds of situations. Uh, you know, we should be talking about that to our legislature. And telling them that that is a matter of public policy and this borough expects to get some incentives. For converting our fleet to an electric fleet.
I'm gonna freeze there, let Deb comment, and then I'm, I know that's like the perfect segue to the next section, but I see that was on the, on the button, so I gotta let them comment first.
Yeah, I just, hold on. Yeah, I just wanna say I agree. That's our future. It is our future. And like you said, maybe a year from now, it'll only take twenty minutes to charge a car. You know, right, you know, five years ago, nobody even heard of it, but, and being on the climate action committee. I'm all about, let's do this. I mean, I know that's easier said than done, but I, I do think we need to keep talking about it. And seriously.
In, in full fleet.
Yeah.
I mean, that, that's gotta be just kind of the way we look at the future of it. So Diane mentioned grants, which is, you know, it's, it's, it's as if she's reading the agenda of this forward. Uh, so let's move ourselves forward to number six, uh, which is the conversation about uh, various grants to infrastructure, safety and mobility. So.
Earlier, Matt had mentioned about the infrastructure committee. And obviously, we heard a little bit from the climate action with Adam. These, these grants that we're looking at relate to those committees. Um, we just wanna kind of get out ahead and discussing, looking at improving infrastructure, safety, mobility and recreation. Of course, you have the P A gaming statewide local share grant program, which there's a number of things we're looking at, including um, the point of access study. The point of access study is really a first step in multi-year, multi-step process to improving the interchange accesses here. Access to the parkway. And then the borough traffic conditions baseline study is simply, if indeed. Hillwood is successful and Amazon builds a distribution center here. The council's contemplated a condition whereby they would post opening, uh, look at roads to determine. How those roads are functioning and all our various intersections. Well, we need a really good baseline study. To know the incremental impact to the roads. So we, we kind of need to be thinking about getting the grant now. Theoretically, that he'll get moving here in the future. Um, road safety improvements, we've talked a lot about Lewin Lane. And Beulah Road, we've talked about Beulah Road and Forest, we've talked about a number of intersections that we can improve and. Um, looking at something you've seen down in Carson, Matt, and I talked about the other day where out towards the west end, you see uh, your speed is sign. With a very big sign, here's what the seat speeds limit is, kind of helping motors. We, we've um. Conducted some surveys with Penn Dot's help, measuring the volume going on Beulah, but also the speed. Um, and it's about ninety to ninety-five percent of the vehicles on that road could be ticketed. They're going that fast. Um, there's reasons for that. It's a downhill, it's a straight shot and it's coming off an interstate and those three factors tend to lead towards people driving faster. So with some schools, uh, sort of some safety things, we also talk about, we need to look at. The feasibility of the Woodland Hills High School sharing a new roadway with a potential new. Uh, driveway on Greensburg Pike and a new signal. Again, if the Amazon moves forward. We can't wait till it's finally approved and then think, what are we doing now? We have to start thinking about getting grants now and getting engineering now. So that potentially, if that does happen, we're, we're in the right position. The next ones are just. Um, things we've talked about in the app, in the comprehensive plan with Wilkinsburg or Wilkins Township, I'm sorry, in Monroeville. Uh, we talked a lot about Churchill Road, which is a county road, a state road and a local road. It's all three. Uh, we're actually owners of it for only a couple hundred yards, as is Penn Dot for a couple hundred yards. But then it's mainly a county road as it goes down through Wilkins Township, past the grade school. So we talked about making it a, a road where maybe a sidewalk can be put along the road. And we need to get, again, grants to do that. And then the last ones, um, or the next two deal with the greenway. And improving access to it. And potentially developing a park on it. So that would be more or less on Adam's. Uh, committee as well as government relations, government relations is all these.
Yeah, well, that's what I was gonna say is I'm, I'm kind of waiting for you to, to, to finish to say, you know, the, as, as. You may recall, um, you know, we had the opportunity to, to kind of meet, talk about how, how we can, you know, work. And a lot of things kind of go, get passed from committee A to committee B to keep it moving, right? And so most of the time, we're talking about kind of grant space. Um, it's gonna fall into one committee first to kind of get the, the baseline of this is what we want, this is, this is what we're looking at. Start preparing the actual basics of the grant, and then it's gonna come to government relationships. Because the, the reality, um, for anybody who's done any kind of grant writing, uh, at all. Um, turns out, right, that kind of conversation with, with some folks who may have some, some help along the way. And, you know, may get where you're coming from as a community, uh, is as valuable as the quality grant that you write.
Yeah.
And so when we get to those points with any of these, and quite frankly, before that. Uh, try to have the conversations with the representatives, with the congressperson, with the state rep. You know, depending on where the grant is with, with county, so that our grant just doesn't fall into the pile. Right? We want our grants to get pulled out and go like, oh, let's make sure we look at this one, right? When they're making their decision, they can process.
The last grant we've talked a little bit about is the tree canopy and, and beginning um, a long range plan of maintaining and enhancing the tree. Canopy of Churchill, both on the public and the private spaces. Um, Dennis at Gateway Engineering has been invaluable in helping to cost estimate these things and. And helping us understand, um, who we need to talk to, uh, even to have a conversation with the state about some of them or whoever. So uh, he's been very helpful with the cost estimates as well, most, most particularly. So in general, I just wanna get these out in front of you. So that as you see them come and eventually some of them may require resolutions. Uh, which will, the state wants to say, are you really in? And then once you pass a resolution, you'll at least begin to have these conversations with these.
So with these, do you know, and there's a lot of these, so when you throw a lot of these, it's, it's a lot of pieces. Um, every grant has a grant cycle?
Yeah, so there, so there's some that are coming up even in March and April here. And we were just having a conversation with one of the state agencies that um, the March deadline. Uh, if we pass a resolution in April, they'll still be okay with that. They, they'll wanna know when they get all their pile together, how serious we are. Um, but the, the D C N R ones and. Um, the, the gaming one, that, that one also is, is a, is one that has a, a closer timeline.
Add to these what the grant cycle is for these, so that kind of.
Yeah, so Dennis has in his engineer report a little bit of that. Dennis, I can't recall if we had the, the deadlines for those.
I, um, I don't know if I had that in the engineer's report. I have that in that separate P S R that I'll have for next week for sure. The L S A grant is actually due next week, next Tuesday, the fifteenth.
That's the gaming one, and that's one of the ones, um, where our state senator encouraged us to apply to the one mayor you had mentioned early, uh, a while ago. And I think he replied back to us saying, hey, I really want you to apply for this. And that's one of those.
Yeah, I was gonna ask you where we stand with that. I know, um, Senator Costa had pushed it on us and I, you know, forwarded it to you. And you had some conversation telling me that, you know, you were looking into that.
And by pushed it, you mean had shown us an opportunity that was available for us that, that may be beneficial to our community?
I word pushed, it's just.
Yeah, I'm gonna go with, you know, it's best an opportunity that may be beneficial. Yeah, so. Absolutely.
I just want, Alex, I really appreciated you doing this. Because I think we always have to remember, when I first came on the council, it took me probably two years to figure out where all those acronyms actually meant. So I think it's real important that when we're in meetings like this, that we say. Not just the acronym, but that we say what the agency is, what the, whatever it is. So that those of us who might not know them, uh, understand fully what we're talking about. Uh, but having these things in front of the whole council is really important. Because different committee members working from different perspectives might know that these are in the works, but the other ones wouldn't. So it's, it's important. Thanks.
Good question.
Absolutely.
Alex, this walking in biking lanes, I'm trying to, I'm trying to visualize. There are areas of Churchill Road I, I can't imagine.
So in the comprehensive plan, there were detailed maps and feasibility. The county Public Works Department has provided a cost estimate. And we made, I think, at least one grant application through Anna Gork at the county. Um, she works um, within the Economic Development Office, but does a lot of the Greenway Park and Recreation Planning on behalf of that department. So we've applied before and yeah, there's, there's a lot more to it. So maybe offline, I'll show you some of those images that were done Diane can recall. Uh, they were actually had eleven by seventeens included in the plan that showed you, but yeah, it's. Like a lot of Pennsylvania, um, sidewalks are kind of not there sometimes for. Uh, some geometry reasons and some geography reasons. And so, but nonetheless, we. Not all the public is able bodied and not all, not everybody can drive. But we had lots of testimony, even in the Amazon space where. People talked about having to rely on transit and how challenging it is to walk to and from bus stops in our small community. So whatever we could do to improve those, um, we wanna do. And, and this one would be multi municipal because most of it is Wilkins Township. A good part of the, the road as it goes down, I think Delarm, Delarm, or is that the road that's down at the bottom of the hill there where the bridge is out? Um, it's the yellow belt, yeah.
But most of it, wouldn't you be infringing on somebody's private property? I mean, how, how would?
I don't know the right of way width always, but you'll be surprised, not all right of ways are exactly where the pavement edge or shoulder edges is. Sometimes you could tell by the utility poles where the right of way might be, but. Let's put it this way, when the comprehensive plan was done and the county worked with those three municipalities. Um, there was a little bit of that analysis. I, there was not a right of way study or a real hard, fast survey. But yeah, those are the kinds of issues. And there may be um, how, how requests like you would for a new sewer line. Or a new water line for some right of way, um, easement access from property owners moving down. Or moving up, depending on which we.
So wouldn't necessarily be the entire road, just parks of the road depending?
Well, we wanted that work. I mean, I, I mean, yeah, the, the idea would be a network that would, from one point to another point be. Um, a safe, walking, biking space along the road.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Any other thoughts on that? I do have, I'll, I'll save it for, for later. Um, let's, let's move through to, to number seven then, if we can.
So, um, this actually, I'll, I'll use an example in the mayor's neighborhood. There's a, there's a property that. Um, you might call it a residue property, an orphan property that was left over from a developer. Developers were often have lots and they might have called them green space back in the fifties or sixties, even the seventies. And, and it really wasn't unbuildable lot and they become nuisance lots. And there's one that you brought to our attention last year. And I shared that with our Three Rivers Land Bank COG, right? And Natalie Boydston, who you just appointed to the tree uh, c- committee, serves as a paid employee for that organization. And when I shared that with her, that the land bank can only do so much with certain properties. And this was one, though she could give me some information, really couldn't do a lot with. Um, but the county has, and that's what this program here at the County Redevelopment Authority, they have the vacant property recover program. They, according to Natalie and the, the person Dylan who works at the county, they seem to kind of can complement each other. And as many of you might understand, Churchill isn't. One that one might think about quickly when it comes to redevelopment and vacant land and vacant property problems. Um, but it's good to have these resources available to us. And what it would be is if we're interested in pursuing it. We'd uh, pass a resolution and become a part of the county's redevelopment authority vacant property recovery program. And it, it, it gives us another avenue to move these lots, quite frankly, onto the tax rolls. This one is beginning to not have taxes paid. And it creates opportunities. There may be adjoining landowner as a bona fide. As you can see, there are concrete reuse plan. And demonstrated capacity to do something. So it isn't like you move one problem from one area to another. It actually advances to a permanent solution so that future landowners don't have to worry about this kind of orphan. What, a lot of these become attractive nuisances, a lot of dumping happens on them. And other kinds of issues creating problems for the ones who are closest to the property because they don't wanna be near a, a dumping on parcel, so. Um, just wanna get this in front of you because. just want to get this in front of you because again, I think it's just another way for us to handle that issue of it, as it comes up from time to time and have another tool in our toolbox.
Well, I, I would just comment the, the, the idea of joining things that will help the borough that are in the county. You all know my, my health department space about that. So let's, let's not repeat that mistake. Not join because we somehow feel we were above it. So sounds like, sounds like a win to me. Any other comments on that before we move on to, uh, infrastructure bidding? Talk to me.
So I, I think I forwarded to the infrastructure committee and, and something we discussed again, back to last year in November, we provided a list of roads. Marbury and Elm Hill were the primary focus of the 2022 paving program. We budgeted about, we, we did budget exactly 365,000, which is a combination of a general fund, transfer and a liquid fuels amount of about 96,000 for the year 2022. But when we've done some cost estimates, it looks like our budget will at least get us through Elm Hill and the northern part of Marbury. It kind of is interesting the way the road splits and goes in two different directions. So I provided you a little bit of that. We're not going to talk about those numbers because they're our estimates, right? We, uh, we want to see what the bids will come back and, and we will, as we've done in the past, provide some opportunity for the pavers to provide pricing on what we call alternates. And if we can afford adding an alternate to the base bid, we will. And obviously the first one would be do, would be like the 2400 block, the lower. If you're looking at a map, there's like a, a north half with Elm, then there's the southern half. We look at it in that southern half of the road to that base bit, if we can afford it. Is all you know, who filled up a gas, uh, take a gas in your car. Those products are involved in, in paving. And it's probably pretty volatile. And as Gavin and I were even talking about, uh, it's pretty standard operating procedure to have, uh, can't think of the right word, but if the price needs to go up.
An escalator type clause. I think, uh, Pendot has a publication 408 that Dennis probably could explain better than I could, but I think it, it sort of went, once, uh, once the fuel prices hit a certain threshold, then there's a, there's an increase that kicks in under that.
It happened with salt to us this year in the, in the Shayco bid. Uh, there was an escalator that they were able to take advantage of. So what we thought this price of salt was going to be adjusted a little bit during the year, which again was permissible in the agreement. So I say that to say, uh, if we advertise this week and near the end of the month, we'll get our bids, which will give us some time for you to review the bids in April and award the contract in April and then possibly, you know, the drill, try to meet with the contractors in May and then before school starts, get the roads done sometime in July, August.
Just wonder if you would just take a second to talk about pipes and paving. I know a lot of people in the public wonder and complain about the fact they see people resurfacing a street and then the next week somebody's digging it up to put in new pipes. How do we address?
My favorite subject, which is the pavement management program, which we're going to be starting here soon.
Right.
Which is a multi-year and, and I don't mean a three year, five year, even further out, look at doing things. And we would try our, the best we can to communicate with gas and other utilities who are in the, the right of way. But, um, the world isn't perfect and sometimes we know things break and we can't help. It's incumbent upon us to make sure they do restoration to the highest degree possible. But for those of you familiar, sometimes it works well. We just, um, Royal Court, two years ago in 2020, the water company tore up half of it. And we agreed to pay the other half of it so that the people in Royal Court got a pretty nice road with the water repair and replacing the water line in that area. But if you remember last year, we had a little garbage truck.
Yeah.
Gets stuck on the end of Marbury, making a turn because of our storm sewer. Uh, there was, it was a collapsed pipe that, um, the vehicle had to be extricated out and thankfully nobody was hurt. But, but that whole pipe needs to be addressed. And what Dennis does, uh, at Gateway Engineering, they look at cameraing all of those. We spent a good bill, a good bit on closed captioning, you know, circuit, closed circuit television inside those, those pipes to determine. So we, we do those this year, like we did at the end of last year, beginning of this year, to see what kind of pipe work we have to do before we figure out whether we're going to handle the rest. So each of these costs include repairs we might do, which is minimal at the cap, uh, catch basin level, but the contractor will be required to do in, in the rebuild. And then we also try to account for, um, base repair. We estimate quantities that if you remember a few years ago, before I got here down off of Nottingham, I think it was Kingsdale, I'm unsure if I have the right name. I don't think I do. But anyways, the road down off Nottingham towards Rhode Island, you really underestimated the base repair and it really blew up our plan that year. So I think Dennis, yeah, long gone. Yeah. So I think we try to include that, um, you know, in, in the, in the estimates so that we're all walking. But when in the ideal world, we'd all be knowing when each other's replacing their gas and water lines and doing it in, in coordination. And that's part of the work we want to improve on.
And that, that one up on Royal Court, I think it was either the water company that came in first, replaced the lines and that road was all paved. And a few months later, then the gas company came in, tore up that brand new road and put their lines in. It was like, why couldn't they coordinate their efforts and come out and inspect at the same time? I mean, it didn't happen, but like I said, not in the perfect world.
That, that is ideally what we'd like to see. It's unfortunate. Okay. And so I think we're, we're on pace with that. Get the work done. All right. Uh, on number nine. So the HRC, I can tell you there's, there's a little bit of conversation that needs to happen about who the membership will be. We've gotten them all through. There's been between some folks a little bit of disagreement of recommendations right now. And so I haven't heard that. So we're kind of holding to like your back, uh, from, from Brooke and Brooke is, is not going to be here for, for a few days. But that's where, where we kind of left off on, on that, but we have kind of reviewed it all. And we should have the, the five members relatively soon. On, uh, rec, anything, uh, in the rec world, sort of appointments?
Well, I reached out to everybody whose terms are up, including myself. There are four of us that have agreed to go on for another three years and one or two members really just want to be volunteers. So they'll still be participating, but they will not be actual rec board members. And I'm waiting to hear back from one more. So I mean, we have room for other people. So if you know anyone, we also don't have, um, you know, Bob Ferry was our director or what is the?
Chairman.
Chairman, chairman. Um, he, no, he has stepped down as chairman. So we're kind of looking for more members and a chairman. So that's where we are right now.
Potentially then we could have, um, a, a requirement or ask you to approve four members, potentially next week, maybe more.
Right?
Yeah. Yes.
And this, this might be an appropriate time to ring up. Deb and I were talking about, um, the annual bunny parade. So we'll try to resurrect that and get that going.
I'm ready.
So we have our bunny.
Got my costume.
We need, we need some chocolate rabbits.
Was the pun intended? Sorry.
No, I think, like, well, is Bob, I don't know if you talked to Bob about getting the, the bunnies, supporting the chocolate rabbits?
Um, you know what? I did.
And he's.
The, the candy pass hour or what have you? I did. And you said it's going to look into it and get back to you.
I have an earphone.
Okay. Oh, it's like the Apple Cookie Company or something like that, who usually helps us out. Yeah. You know, I'll make a note.
And I think if he can't do it, I, I know Janet Paul told me that she knows, she knows the woman who
Right.
takes care of the bunnies. So we're planning, we don't have a date yet for the parade, but.
It's, it's always a Saturday before Easter. So that would be the 16th. I have it in my book.
So look forward to us, we'll be driving the black, the black convertible with.
That's right. We'll decorate. Anyone who wants to help decorate, 9:00 AM, be here.
All right. I, I would just say this, I think, and I've mentioned this to Jay and a few other people. Since he's been kind of locked down with COVID for a couple of years, it seems to me that it's a good time to rethink where we want to go with our rec board in terms of what's our vision? What do we think the needs are now? And how could the rec board, uh, participate in those or lead those or whatever? It's just a good time to take a, to take a look and see what can we really do with this structure that we have? It's a connection with the community. So that's just offered that comment.
We, we've had conversations about this and one, not to take away from the bunny parade because you know, you, you, my daughter's out there. My, my street, my street comes out pretty hard for, for the bunny parade. So right now, Garrick represents on, on the bunny parade days.
You want their candy, my autograph?
That's right. They want a picture. We've done socially distant bunny parade. We've done, you know, we've done bunny parades. But I think that's you're, you're a hundred percent with it in, in, you know, moving us forward. I think Diane, your, your point about kind of recalculating, a lot of it for me, just kind of for, in terms of having a rec board and what we're doing, really is going to sit on what our relationship is with our new families, with the children of Churchill. So that we're bringing them to more of a sense of community. You know, one of the things I think about our community that, that remains true is, you know, we have pockets, right? So Garrick has Garrick, Garrick's strong, right? Like it's strong, you know? But looking at ways that we can bring kind of families together in a way, and obviously the, the community day was such a success, right?
So great.
It was so good. And so.
And the weather was per, like everything just fell into place. Weather was perfect. Everything was.
You know, here we are in a space that outdoor activities, you know, are a kind of a safer space that we can be in, right? So it seems to me that, that, that's a conversation of kind of full board and bringing the community back together in a way that it becomes something that is, that is strong and it continues the way that it is. The only other thing that I wanted to bring up on that space, in, in terms of both the record, kind of tying eight other things together. You had mentioned, Alex, about, you know, not everybody in Churchill is, is able-bodied. And so as we look at some of the things that we're doing, making sure that we're taking into consideration how people who are wheelchairs or, you know, using walkers, how they're going to access those things. Because in the past, our location in the community day was brilliant and amazing. And I thought it was a great time. I, I love it. My daughter loves it. But if you're a kid in a wheelchair, you weren't going to be able to navigate through the grass all the time. And so just keeping that in consideration, just like in the infrastructure space, the, uh, magic of the bus stops that you were talking about. I'm still trying to figure out, I feel like Pendot or whoever put that ramp on William Penn, you know, it leads to grass. Right? I feel like there, there should be, uh, some conversation about why we have a ramp in the grass. If you're in a wheelchair trying to cross a William Penn to get to the bus stop.
So right.
It seems a bit crazy to me. So putting that out there as a side note. Moving into just comments from folks, regular new issues discussion. For, for folks who, uh, are not aware, I suppose. We have Michelle, that's right, Andrew, who has taken over for Krista, uh, big, big waves. I, I got you, babe. I appreciate you. So she is on board and we are, we are fortunate to have her. I'm excited. I had chest talk, right? She's great. Just cause I know. But for everybody else, I, and then I will turn it to, to folks if, if Alex, if you want to say anything about it.
I'm excited as well. Michelle's awesome. She comes to us from the county. She's a Gisby at Pitt grad with a master's degree in public administration. She also has a master's degree in, in education. So she has two master's degrees, which is pretty awesome. But she and Krista have been working very closely, in fact, on weekends and some weeknights to make sure the transition, uh, continues to be smooth. In a small borough like ours, um, it, it could easily happen. There's no other staff besides us that things could fall through the cracks. So Ralph and, and I and Krista and Michelle have been working together to try to make sure we don't lose something. So be patient with us. If it seems like we're kind of busy or not replying to things quickly, but she's really, um, a spark of energy coming into us and we're really excited about that. I want to note that there are 24 of us in total, but 12 of, of folks who are participants this evening. And then some of us are redundant, I think in this space. So there's 12 participants that you don't see kind of off camera within the, within the webinar format.
So. Come to your business, anything you want to bring up? Anything you want to discuss?
Yeah. Jake, I, I just wanted to make one comment about, um, if you're looking through the materials that we received last month, a thing that caught my interest was the, the latest report from the Allegheny Land Trust. And they were talking about the, um, the upcoming cleanup days they're having done. And now we got that information and I know right now we still have, we still struggle to get information out to, to our residents. And it's a good opportunity for people to come out. It was a day in April, I believe, and a day in May, that they're going to have some cleanup opportunities down there. I did copy it. I put it in my email, sent it to the garden club, people like that. But somehow we did. And there's a lot of other things I, that I see that come through that, that I'm thinking, boy, the, the resident should know this as well. So somehow along the lines, we are able to communicate some of the things that we get so that other people see it as well.
Yeah, I think it's a really good point. And that, you know.
I know it's hard too.
Well, it, but, but I also think we've dedicated the space to make that happen. Yeah. So it's going to take a little bit of time, I think, for the communication committee to really sort through what the best way to make things happen is, um, you know, yes, we're working, you know, due to space savvy citizen. Yes, we're looking at the website, you know, redoing it. Uh, but it is going to take a little bit of time. But I think unlike previous years and have this conversation, we're actually putting things in motion. Um, which is a nice space to be in. Uh, so I think, I think your point is, is well taken. I think it's something that we, we have.
I'm real excited about Savvy Citizen coming in. I, I mean, I can't wait till that Savvy Citizen and our new, our new website as well.
Redesign is a biggie, you know, because you're talking about how citizens are going to access all kinds of information. And when that's redone and makes a lot more sense to people coming on for the first time, we'll be able to get a lot more information out to them really well. I'm really anxious to see what that's.
And to Jake's point about the, the, you know, the different neighborhoods, in my travels throughout the borough and I, a lot of travels, there are a lot of neighborhoods that do things that we don't realize.
Oh, right.
You know, the difference, like Garrick has on the Ridgewood over there. They always have something going on. Over in Hampstead, they have things. So there are pockets all over the place in Churchill. It culminates when we have our, our community day. But I mean, we do have a lot of good things going on here.
It'd be, it'd be interesting to try and put those pockets as part of.
Yeah.
Identify.
Sure.
Side note.
Yep.
Yeah. Anything else from, from folks? I'm going to do one shameless pitch on my own. Uh, and then I'll, I'll turn it back to you. That's a very quick shameless pitch. So for those of you don't know, I, I coached Little League Soccer, uh, for the Woodin Hills, uh, youth soccer for the last, you know, 15 years, uh, which just aside, we are undefeated in the church. Best around the region, just saying, you know, with a great goalkeeper who talks a lot of trash. But is it, the spring is coming up and we are in really desperate need of referees. So if you know anybody who's played a little soccer, knows a little something. You know, go to the Woodin Hills Youth Soccer Association website. We are, we are, we're, we're really short on kind of the older, older referees. So I'm throwing that to you. I, I haven't put a pitch out for myself in, uh, probably since I've been here. So that's the only thing I got. Matt, I'll turn it to you so I can shut up a lot faster.
All, all good. Um, I just wanted to, just for the, the rest of council, for their knowledge, our local governor academy was held at the Allegheny County Emergency Management Center last, or two weekends ago now. So it's, it was, it's pretty interesting. But, um, you know, just on the side of public education, you know, they take over 1.5 million calls annually for 911 services. And what was interesting is they were talking about how, I think it's like 92% of their calls are answered and, and you know, you have somebody on the line, an operator in 10 seconds or less. You may call, now I didn't know this, but you may call and you may get a thing that says, you know, hey, we're receiving a large number of calls, please stay on the line. Something I didn't realize, you know, you'd think, oh, maybe hang up and try and call again. That actually puts you back further in the, in the queue and can actually screw up their system. So, you know, it was just a public, you know, again, public thing that I learned. Stay on the line, wait, they'll get to your call, you know, as quickly as possible. Sometimes it can take up to 20, 30 seconds. Of course, if there's a large emergency, they do have, you know, times where it can be up to a minute. Nobody wants that, but if there's a huge thing going on, we can expect that and understand it. The other interesting thing was that if they get calls and hangups, you know, your kid calls or whatever else, they're going to call back. If they don't get to you, they're going to dispatch fire, ambulance and police. So since we have a volunteer system for a lot of that, that means that if, you know, you accidentally call or realize you're pocket dialed, call them back, let them know, make sure you answer the call when they call you back, you know. call them back, let them know, make sure you answer the call when they call you back, you know, if your kid does it, explain the situation, they can take care of that. But if they don't hear from you, they're dispatching that and that can take away from other people that might have emergencies. So just thought that was really interesting, neat knowledge, you know, to, to share. And it was a pretty high, pretty neat thing to see if you ever get the chance.
Yeah, I was with Matt and if you haven't been there, you, you should go because it's fascinating. And, and even the fact that they work such long hours that it's, it's grueling. It really is grueling. But I mean, they have state of the art, everything there. It's, it's just an amazing place. Love, I loved it. I loved every minute of it. I have one thing.
Yes, ma'am.
Paul and I are at the Rotary Club and I just kind of want to give a, I don't know, it's a shout out or whatever, but they are working with the Jewish family and community refugee and immigrants. They do terrific job. They did with the refugees from Afghanistan. Now they're working with, to assist the Ukrainian crisis with these refugees who are going to be locating to Pittsburgh. And Paul, you could talk about it too, but they're looking for any help, whether it's monetarily or help with job employment, housing, language assistance, all kinds of things. So if anybody's interested or people out there who are listening, it's just a really wonderful thing. And just with everything that's going on now, any, anyway, any of us can help.
Yeah, even, even some of the volunteering things where driving a family that arrives Pittsburgh National Airport, driving them to a host family somewhere in Pittsburgh. If you, if you speak a, a language, something like that. So there were a lot of opportunities. If you, you know, could, could volunteer in that capacity, I just talked with our, our treasurer today, we donated a thousand dollars. And if that money is going to go to the Rotary Foundation, who will in turn make sure that that gets to the proper channels rather than like, well, I don't know where this money is really going. So that's that kind of thing. And the last thing was that if you felt inclined to make a donation of any size and you wanted to make it out to the Churchill Wilkins Rotary and you can get it to me and I will get it to the proper channels.
I've worked with J F C S over the years.
Fantastic. Me too.
Refugee resettlement.
Yeah.
To my old, old work. Yeah, all the time. This is a really challenging time. I think you bring up the, the space of what's happening in the Ukraine. I generally don't spend more than a second on national issues or certainly international issues. But it is something that kind of the last bastion right now for the countries. My prayers are for people in the UK, just kind of side note. So if there is anything else, if not, we are going to head into a brief executive session of the purposes of discussing a legal matter. And we will at that point, we will adjourn the workshop and then head into executive. There's no other conversation. We're done. Let's adjourn and we'll head into executive session. Thank you everyone for attending.
Thank you.
Thank you.